Good evening. It is six o'clock. This is City Council on July 16th, right, is that the right day? Yep. Twenty nineteen, and we're gonna start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And just to let you know, Roy Anderson is not here, but he will be talking to us via the phone over the PA system here, so Roy is in attendance, and we'll have a roll call vote, or a roll call attendance, please.
Dave Bowman?
Present.
Barbara Bynum?
Present.
Roy Anderson?
Present.
Judy Ann Files?
Present.
Doug Glassbell?
Present.
All City Council members are present.
Thank you. Any changes for the agenda?
There are no changes to tonight's agenda.
All right. Is there anybody that would wish to speak to council on anything that is not on the agenda? All right, let me read a couple things. This is sort of our disclaimer. "The call for public common agenda is a time when concerned members of the community may publicly voice their concerns and discuss items of interest. Please note that no formal action will be taken on the matters raised during this time. Individuals wishing to speak will be recognized by the chair, invited to the podium, asked to state their name and address, and will be allowed three minutes to speak. Comments made during this time should be addressed to the council and pertain to matters of at least general importance to the city and its operations. Please be aware that neither the City Council nor the city staff are expected to respond or engage in discussion or debate. Personal attacks and disagreements, personnel and employment matters, the use of profanity or ethnic, racial, or gender-oriented slurs are prohibited, as is any disorderly conduct which violates state or local laws and shall not be permitted. If the individual disregards these rules, they will be asked to leave the chamber." And there'll be a light that is green. When it flashes, that means you have one minute left. When it's yellow, you have thirty seconds. When it's red, you are finished. So I'll start with Mrs. Grigsby. Is that?
My name's Veronica Grigsby.
You'll come up to the microphone, please?
I'd actually rather have her root the mail than do this. Veronica Grigsby, I live in, on Oxford Street. Do you need the number?
Please.
Ten twenty-three Oxford Street. Have lived there for, since the house was built, I mean, a long time.
You don't have to tell us.
Kitty Corner from us opened Airbnb. None of us knew about it or anything, except that there's no place to park anymore on our street. Now, I know he's legally can do that, Airbnb, but can there be any restrictions to the parking? Cause he has a double driveway that actually four cars could fit in, plus the spaces in front of his house, but instead they park across the street in front, got the whole block here practically, and is there any parking restrictions or?
I would have to have code, Mr. Golinski, I believe, talk to you about that, and we will have somebody get back to you and talk to you about what the code is in that area and talk about if there's anything that we can do, but that's the best we can do. Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Good evening. My name is Darcy Largent. I live across the street from Mr. and Mrs. Grigsby at ten twenty-four Oxford, which is just next door to this new Airbnb. Wanted to take the opportunity tonight to come talk to you. This is on the fly, so I'll do my best. It became a concern a few weeks ago. My question is, does Montrose have an ordinance established that Airbnbs operate under at this time, or do they just contact Airbnb website and start renting out all the four rooms? Do you know?
What we have at this point is they do have to pay a hospitality tax like a hotel would, but as far as I know, that is the only limitation, and we are making sure that Airbnbs are signed up with the city to pay that tax. Past that, we've not done anything.
It's a sales tax license, basically, is what they are required to have, and it comes with some requirements.
So that's kind of the position that the city has taken at this point, cause I know this is probably not the only Airbnb in our little, not-so-little-town anymore, Montrose, but comes with Airbnbs comes problems, particularly in neighborhoods. Mrs. Grigsby talked about the parking, which in the last month, we finally band together, and I guess if we have to call police every time there's a, you know, a ruckus, or we can't park our cars in front of our house, we're willing to do that. Know that our police have definitely got a lot of other stuff on their plate, that they don't need to be doing that, but, and city ordinances, I've definitely filed on other neighbors, when, through your website, trash removal, trailers, so I guess at this point, we'll just keep banding together, and we're not, we're not gonna go away. My, one of my concerns in the parking is I have a fifteen-year-old daughter who is there this summertime. She'll be going back to school, but right now, she's there by herself all the time. I guess it's more for the owner, what kind of vetting is done for these Airbnbs, or do they just rent out to a room and hope that the person turns out to be a good person? That's, I think, we've kind of talked amongst all us neighbors, and that definitely, bringing in strange people, whether it's one night, two nights, three nights, that's a concern. We've had a, I've been there for eleven years now, don't necessarily want to move, but we definitely have seen two houses down. He moved two days ago because of the, one of the neighbors that took residence at the Airbnb for a couple days. I think, yeah, my daughter, her being home alone, so I just wanted to ask, does the city plan on seeing if there's more problems, or is there eventually in the future, near future, maybe an ordinance that might cover and help protect us Montrose citizens that actually bought that house to enjoy our living in our neighborhood?
Your time is up. We hear you, and I'm sure that the city will, will look and see if there's anything we can do. I can't make any promises, but I very much appreciate you coming to council tonight and bringing this to us so that we're aware and we can begin to look into this.
Yeah.
It is sort of a, it's a brand-new problem all over America, and we will certainly look into this.
And we do file, I have filed Airbnb complaints, so I'll continue to do that daily.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Bill McMonigal, hi, how are you this evening?
Good, Bill, how you doing?
Good to see you guys again. Saw you about a month ago. The problem in Oxford is coming to a head, okay? It was really a freak show last Monday, okay, after the Fourth of July. You've got truck, trailer, seven parking spots being taken up, okay, and first of all, there's also a surveillance camera pointed directly at my front window, okay? Now, if you can picture this at your home, guy standing over the truck, okay, smoking a cigarette, gawking right into my front door. Twenty minutes, half hour? It's just an ongoing show. You gotta do something. If it's a question of just getting the sales tax, all you're doing is thumbing your nose at everybody on the street. Really, I mean, when you think about it. Something has to be done. There has to be some kind of an ordinance put in place that will give you some kind of a restriction and give us some peace. So, there you go. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything more on the Airbnb? Phil?
Sorry? Phil Frysmas, six nineteen North Second Street. Have a business at eight forty-six East Main Street, and I would like the city to at least look into the crosswalk there between Horsefly and Coffee Trader. It's pretty dangerous. There's a lot of near misses every week, so if you guys could at least spread the word and maybe have somebody look at it. It's pretty dangerous.
Thank you. Any other comments? Not on the agenda. At this point, we'll go into the agenda. First item is approval of minutes, and I would take a motion to ratify the minutes of the last meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
I'll second.
Thank you, and a roll call vote?
Dave Bowman?
Aye.
Barbara Bynum?
Aye.
Roy Anderson?
Aye.
Judy Ann Files?
I will abstain, since I was not at the meeting the full-time.
Doug Glassbell?
Aye.
We have four in favor and one abstention.
Thank you. Next is Resolution twenty nineteen dash nineteen. City Council consideration of Resolution twenty nineteen dash nineteen, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Montrose, Colorado, to notify the Montrose County Clerk of their intention to authorize a ballot question for the election to be held on the first Tuesday of November twenty nineteen for the purpose of imposing a citywide public safety improvement sales tax to address critical and immediate needs of the City of Montrose Police Department. Chief Hall?
Thank you. I don't have much to say tonight, other than I appreciate, once again, council looking at this issue, and I think that over the last several months since January, the Citizens Committee that was formed took a deep dive into our needs and our situation as it relates to public safety in the community, and I appreciate council putting that together and mandating that, and here we are tonight with this decision. So, once again, I appreciate it. I think that, I think that we've been very transparent and tried to be very transparent with the community, and that's about what I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And discussion by council?
It's my understanding that this simply is a notification saying, we'll be, we have the possibility of presenting a ballot question. However, we have not yet worked out the specifics in that ballot question, so this is just notification.
All this is, is a notification, if council wills that with a vote tonight, but you're exactly right, Councilman Files, this is not certifying ballot language in any way, shape, or form. This is just notifying Montrose County that you all intend to move forward with ballot language before September sixth, which is, is the last day to certify that language, but at any time, it's not a foregone conclusion. You all could decide if, to, to go a different route, depending on what you decide tonight.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Roy.
I just want to say that I think this is important in terms of a response to the Citizen Committee, their, their recommendations were that we move as quickly as possible, and I think this is, in recognition of that, it's important that we do something on the November ballot, and so, as Council Woman Files said, we're simply getting this lined up, and it doesn't specify anything about the value of a tax or any ballot language, but I think this is the way that we can move ahead right now in response to the recommendations made by our Citizen Committee, so I support this.
Thank you. Barbara? Seeing, then I'll call for a motion, please.
I'll do public comment.
Oh, public comment, excuse me, thank you. Any comment from the public on this issue? I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty nineteen dash nineteen as presented.
I'll second.
And a roll call vote, please?
Dave Bowman?
Aye.
Barbara Bynum?
Aye.
Roy Anderson?
Aye.
Judy Ann Files?
Aye.
Doug Glassbell?
Aye.
We have a unanimous vote.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a comment?
Yes.
If you would approve it, I would like to request that our city clerk use my signature that she has on a rubber stamp. I noticed that in our packet, there's a place for all of the council, councilors to sign, and this is important. I'd like to get my signature on that, so if that's okay with you, I'd like to-
Absolutely. I saw your email earlier on this, and that will be taken care of, Roy. I appreciate that.
Great. Thank you.
Yep, and Resolution twenty nineteen dash twenty. City Council consideration of Resolution twenty nineteen dash twenty, authorizing the City of Montrose Police Department to file a victim assistance law enforcement called Vail Grant through the Seventh Judicial District Victims Assistance Board for a total of twenty-eight thousand dollars to cover a portion of the victim advocate's salary, authorizing the chief of police to act in connection with the application, and to provide such additional information as required, and authorizing the city manager, chief of police, and finance director to sign the grant application and reporting documents. And again, Chief Hall?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council members, tonight, we come before you to ask for authorization for a twenty-eight thousand dollar grant through the Victims Assistance Law Enforcement Board. This has been an ongoing, longstanding grant that we apply for every year. This pays for half of Chantel Bainbridge's salary, who's our Victims Assistant Coordinator with the Police Department. Victims Assistance Coordinators by law are mandated as a position within all law enforcement agencies in the state of Colorado, and then the other half of her salary is paid through a VOCA grant, so this is just another excellent way that, you know, the city is using grants to fund positions, especially such a needed positions as Victims Assistance, so, thank you.
Thank you. And any public comment on this? And council?
I'd just like to point out that this grant money that is given out for this is actually part of traffic tickets and violations that are paid into the Seventh Judicial District, and this money becomes available through that process.
Any other comments?
I'd like to also talk about the value of this program. Having talked to community people who have not had a clue where to go to when they have an issue, being able to say to them, call the Police Department, talk to our Victims Advocate, that's been really good for them. So, thank you.
You bet.
Chief Hall for providing this service.
It doesn't necessarily have to be a crime that was committed. People have used our Victims Coordinator for protection orders and to help keep them safe ahead of time, and she does an excellent job, so thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt Resolution twenty nineteen dash twenty as presented.
I'll second.
And a roll call vote, please?
Dave Bowman?
Aye.
Barbara Bynum?
Aye.
Roy Anderson?
Aye.
Judy Ann Files?
Aye.
Doug Glassbell?
Aye.
We have a unanimous vote.
Great. And Ordinance twenty-four eighty-three on second reading. City Council consideration of Ordinance twenty-four eighty-three on second reading, an ordinance of the City of Montrose, Colorado, for the annexation of the Horsefly Edition. And Mr. Gary Baker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nothing new to report. We're all familiar with the site. It's about a half mile north of San Juan and sixty-four fifty intersection, and just north of Cedar Creek. Here is the site. It's two point one four acres in size, and we're recommending approval on second reading.
Thank you. Public comment? Seeing none, I will ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to adopt Ordinance twenty-four eighty-three on second reading.
Second.
I'll second.
And a roll call vote, please?
Dave Bowman?
Aye.
Barbara Bynum?
Aye.
Roy Anderson?
Aye.
Judy Ann Files?
Aye.
Doug Glassbell?
Aye.
We have unanimous vote.
Thank you. And Ordinance twenty-four eighty-four on second reading. City Council consideration of Ordinance twenty-four eighty-four on second reading, an ordinance of the City of Montrose, Colorado, providing for the zoning of Horsefly Edition as an IL?
I-1.
I-1, okay. Light Industrial District. And Gary Baker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This, as stated, it's passed on first reading. We also have a recommendation of approval from the Planning Commission, and the site is shown up on the screen. There is I-1 to the northwest and to the southwest of the site, and we're recommending approval.
Thank you. And public comment? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt Ordinance twenty-four eighty-four on second reading.
Second.
And a roll call vote, please?
Dave Bowman?
Aye.
Barbara Bynum?
Aye.
Roy Anderson?
Aye.
Judy Ann Files?
Aye.
Doug Glassbell?
Aye.
We have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. And number eleven, large sculpture purchase. City Council consideration of the purchase of two bronze sculptures, Where the Eagles Dare and Bad Decision by artist Vic Payne for the continued display in the downtown area, and Assistant City Manager Anne Morgenthaler.
Thank you. The item you're considering tonight is the purchase of two large bronze sculptures, and if I may, I'll give a little bit of background to this item for people in the audience and people who might be watching on TV. The city entered into a loan agreement in April of twenty-twelve to borrow these two large sculptures from the owner, and since then, those sculptures have been located in our downtown, and people have been enjoying them. They were part of a loan agreement that was extended and has since expired. The loan agreement provided for the possible purchase of the sculptures by the city, if the city wanted to, and in January of twenty nineteen, Bob Brown came to see you, council members, at a work session, and explained the large efforts that a group of citizens had gone to here in our community to fundraise in order to purchase these sculptures. Also asked for the City Council and city staff to take over negotiations with the owner in order to work on purchasing the sculptures, asked for the City Council, the City of Montrose, to be the owners of the sculptures, and to contribute funds to the purchase of the sculptures. City Council then met in executive session on February second for the purpose of discussing negotiations and the possible acquisitions of the sculptures, and staff then contacted the owners of the sculptures and learned that the purchase price would be no less than two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the sculptures. So, we're coming back to you now to propose that the city could assist in purchasing these sculptures, and in the memo, the amount of money that the Save the Sculptures Committee has fundraised is detailed, and we confirmed this last week with the Montrose Community Foundation and representatives from Save the Sculptures Committee. They have raised a total of one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, six hundred, one hundred and fifteen thousand, six hundred and fifty-seven dollars in actual donations. Those are held by the Montrose Community Foundation, and fifteen thousand, five hundred in pledged donations. Those pledged donations would be given by the donors if the purchase of the sculptures is realized, and in talking with representatives from the committee, and also Sarah Plumhoff from the Montrose Community Foundation, they feel that these donations will be given. They feel confident that people will make good on their pledges. So, as a potential, sorry, let me back up one more time. The DDA also, during this fundraising effort, pledged up to thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars in order to make up a quarter of the difference between what the committee had raised and the final purchase price of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of the sculptures. So, the DDA is no longer in existence, but I did want you to know that that was their maximum pledged amount, was thirty, thirty-five thousand dollars. So, now, the City Council may consider whether to purchase these sculptures or not. The City Council would need to make up the difference between what the committee has raised and the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar purchase price of the sculptures. So, if you include the pledged donations, the Save the Sculptures Committee has raised a hundred and thirty-one thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven dollars, and the, so the balance is a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, eight hundred and forty-three dollars. We do have, the city does have access to the operational funds and authority to use the operational funds that remained after the dissolution of the Downtown Development Authority, and so it's possible that the City Council could use those funds to make up the difference in order to purchase these sculptures. Also noted in the memo is that the City Council may use general fund dollars to make up the difference, or any portion of the difference, though that, there was not a budgeted item for the purchase of the sculptures out of the general fund this year, but you could direct us to do so, and one final request would be, if you move forward with a motion to approve the purchase of these sculptures, would you please make clear what funding you'd like to use for the purchase of the sculptures? Thank you.
Thank you. And I would take public comment. What took you so long?
Robert Brown, two-two-one, two-two-six-one, Major Lane. I had a conversation with the owner's agent, Mr. Ralph Whackley, and just as a detail to add, but I think it needs to be put into the record, that in addition to the fact that their offer is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that they would take time payment as well, if, if you so choose. I'm very happy that you've got to this point in taking up this, this issue. It's a very important thing to Montrose, and certainly to our team, which came here tonight, so we hope for a optimistic, we are optimistic for a positive solution here, and we'll get this, this thing done after two and a half years of work at it, and we're, we're ready to move forward. Again, thank you all for taking up the issue.
Thank you for your efforts in keeping this whole issue alive. Thank you. And, yes, ma'am?
Lisette Rivera, nine thirty-five South Ninth Street. I've been on the committee for a long time raising these funds, and some people don't see the value of these sculptures, that it does have an economic impact on this town. In our efforts, I've talked to so many people that were driving through, stopped, saw those sculptures, and moved here. It amazed me how many people actually did that. They stopped, they shopped downtown, they spend money, they have lunch. It does have a huge impact on this community, so, please.
Thank you. Anyone else? With that, council discussion?
Well, I, my comments would be, I've been notified by, or contacted by many people around town who seem to be very interested in maintaining those, so I think it's been the number of folks that Mr. Brown interfaced with, and the people that I've spoken with, I think we've got a lot of positive direction that way.
I think that just the question is where the money comes from. I think it's a good idea that we do this, but now we just need to figure out the details, right? And obviously, we need to do that tonight.
In the next several minutes, maybe.
Cause Anne gave us that prerequisite, right?
So, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Roy.
I'm sorry. Okay. I, I think that this clearly has been pointed out, that it does have a neck I, I think that this clearly has been pointed out, that it does have an economic impact downtown. It benefits downtown, I mean, it benefits all of us as a community, but certainly the downtown businesses benefit from it. And I'm reluctant to go into the general fund to do this, but I think, in my opinion, using the DDA funds, I, I assume from what Anne said, that they are sufficient to cover the balance. I think it would be an appropriate use of those funds that we have to decide what to do with at some point anyway. And, and this is something that, that, that the community, I've heard a lot of expression that, that they want to see these retained and, and not, not to go away. So, so that would be my, my suggestion, my opinion.
Thank you.
Well, I think since I've heard from some fellow counselors, I feel sufficiently informed to make a motion. Mr. Mayor, I would, I would move that the city of Montrose spend up to $118,843 from the funds, that, from the DDA's operation fund balance to purchase the two big sculptures downtown for an amount, for a total amount not to exceed $250,000.
Thank you. And second?
I'll second that.
Yeah, I guess the one question I'm going to go to legal on, do we have room here if those pledges don't come in? Or do, no?
Maybe we can come back to council. They can give us a, council could give us a contingency such as they will sometimes do Scott Murphy's big, you know, roundabout projects of, you know, a 5% contingency. I'm awful at math, so I'm not sure what that would be. But as, as it is right now, it's 118,000 plus making sure all those pledges come through.
So who's responsible for making sure all those pledges come through? And Lisette will help, right?
But if worse comes to worse, we could come back and reauthorize something and, okay.
Would it, would it be reasonable to put a contingent funding in our motion?
Would you like to amend the motion to do that?
Well, I would leave that up to the lady that made the motion.
Um, I feel like, you know, we've been presented with a lot of information here. We've talked about these numbers a lot. The Save the Sculptures says they feel 100% confident in these numbers. I, I have confidence in them. They've done a fantastic job. Essentially, if you look at the numbers, they, they raised over half the cost of these. It was a small group of individuals that hit our community really hard. They worked really hard. They held a, a number of events, and I have a lot of faith in them.
Okay, with that.
So another question then. Do we want to make this a one-time payment, or do we want to take Mr. Brown's offer from the owner that we do it on, not all in one year?
I think the, the funds are in that balance right now, and I think deploying them for infrastructure capital investment in downtown is what we ought to be doing with them. And I don't see any reason to, I, I'm afraid if we did that, future councils might, maybe they feel differently. I just, let's do it.
I would agree with Councilor Bynum.
We should probably go ahead and put on the record what everybody's doing. You know, nobody opens a checkbook without looking at Shaney, and everybody's seeing her nod her head, but I think it needs to be in the record what's going on.
Yeah, I mean, the funds are, the funds are there, so I don't think we need to make more work for our staff, and we ought to, this has been going on a long time. Let's, let's, let's write a check and be done with it.
I agree with Barbara.
All right. We ready for a vote?
I think there's not a second on the motion. Otherwise, okay, I'm sorry.
Roll call vote, please.
Dave Bowman.
Aye.
Barbara Bynum.
Aye.
Roy Anderson.
Aye.
Judy Ann Files.
Aye.
Doug Glassbell.
Aye.
We have a unanimous vote.
And Montrose has two statues. Again, Bob Brown and your committee, thank you very much for your perseverance, your hard work, and I'm sure many, many citizens are going to be thanking you very soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we get to have a ceremony? Do we get to celebrate sometime? Bob and Pat, will you put together a? Yeah. A ribbon cutting type?
You might have to have a party in the park.
I think.
Sounds like an idea.
Bob, Bob, you're going to polish them twice a year, right?
Let's decorate them for Halloween.
Yeah, I don't know that the liability will cover that.
Right.
Thank you. And with that, we will hear from Shaney Wittenberg for the sales use and excise tax report, please.
Good evening. So this report for sales use and excise tax is presented to you for May of 2019 compared to the same time period in 2018. Sales and use taxes collected within the city at 3%. Retail sales tax, May compared to May of 2018, is up 1.9%. Construction use tax is down 55.9%. Use and auto use tax is at 4.6%, with the total collection up 3% and a positive budget variance of 7.1%. Year-to-date, sales and use tax compared to the same time period in 2018, retail sales tax is at 4.5% or approximately $271,000. Construction use tax is down 19.8% or $56,000. Use and auto use tax is down 0.9% or $4,000, with total collections up 3.1% or $210,000. Still have a positive budget variance of 8.5% or approximately $544,000. Montrose Recreation District, June 1st of 2014, 0.3% was added to the sales tax to fund the Community Recreation Center. That was a vote of the people that provided that 0.3% tax. 2019, in May, we collected $150,000 or 4.9% less than we did last May. That's very consistent with the total of the sales and use tax that we collected. Year-to-date, $695,000 has been collected in 2019 or 2.7% more than we collected in 2018 through May. Excise taxes, hotel excise tax adds 0.9% to the sales tax, and restaurant tax adds, excise taxes, 0.8%. May compared to May of 2018, hotel excise tax is at 14.5%, restaurant excise tax is at 3.1%, total collections up 5.2% or a positive budget variance of 5%. Please note that last year, hotel tax every month after month was down compared to 2017, so those numbers look great. And they're not large dollars, but just to give you some perspective there. Year-to-date collections compared to 2018, hotel excise tax is up 18.1% or $5,000. Restaurant excise tax is at 2.6% or approximately $4,000. Total excise tax is at 4.8% or just about $9,000, and a positive budget variance of 6.3% or $12,000 more has been collected than we budgeted. Retail sales enhancement, this is part of the vendor's fee that they voted to give to the city to spend on promoting retail sales in Montrose. In 2019, in May, we've collected almost $30,000 or 1.2% more than last year. Year-to-date, we've collected $138,000 or 3.5% more than we did through May of 2018. And please note that in May of 2018, we had one large taxpayer that did not pay on time, so that kind of skews the numbers a little bit, but just an FYI. Other than that, I'll take any questions or concerns you have.
Questions?
I have a quick question. We talked about how it can skew it if a large retailer doesn't turn in. So you put the sales tax collections in the month they're collected, not necessarily the month they're billed, per se?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And with that, we'll go to the Public Information Officer Report from Assistant City Manager Anne Morgenthaler.
Thank you. I'd like to share some information about our, our comprehensive plan meetings coming up next week, and then Chief Hall will talk a little bit about some updates as well. But first, a reminder that we're starting our community workshops next week for the comprehensive plan. We had community kickoff meetings previously, and now the subject-specific workshops start. On July 22nd, we'll be talking about housing and neighborhood topics, and that starts at 5:30 PM in the Centennial Room, which is that room just off of Centennial Plaza. So join us for some refreshments. We'll have a brief presentation and also then some questions as a big group to start getting comfortable with the topic of housing and neighborhoods, and then small breakout sessions to talk about what's working well in our community and what could be changed or created in our community. So that's Monday, the 22nd. And then on Thursday, the 25th, we'll be talking about transportation and, and mobility. So the same type of format for these workshops, but different topics. And we'll give you updates here at council along the way, reminders to attend these workshops. But people may also participate in the comprehensive planning process online by going to cityofmontrose.org/compplan, like the shortened of comprehensive plan, but compplan. And there's an online survey. You can also get all of the dates for these upcoming workshops, and you'll see our staff out and about at community events, too. So Gary was at the farmer's market this last Saturday. I was at an acoustic Tuesday. We'll be at summer music series concerts, trying to reach people and get input about the future of Montrose to envision 2040 in Montrose.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? I'm going to call on Chief Hall in a bit.
Okay, great.
I've actually got a whole list of things that I want to mention, so.
Okay, great.
I will let council speak, and then I'll wrap it all up.
Thank you.
I got all kinds of stuff. And, and the first thing, the Montrose Daily Press, I think that this is the third year for Women of Distinction, is that right? Great event. It is on August 9th, probably starting around 7 o'clock at the Montrose Pavilion. And I want to congratulate Iraun Shaney Wittenberg as being one of the women that is being recognized as a Woman of Distinction. Thank you, and, and good luck in, in that. It's a wonderful event. I've been at it before, and, and Montrose Daily Press, thank you for putting it on. Thank you. Next thing I want to mention is the hard work that our Public Works folks did on Monday and maybe into today. You're all aware, we had a pretty severe storm on Saturday, and trees down, branches down, and immediately people were saying, who's going to clean this up? Well, Public Works got out there on Saturday, got our roads cleaned, and on Monday, they are out there cutting things up, chipping it up, and, and cleaning up the town. Jim, thank you very much. Tell your folks it's very much appreciated, and we noticed how quickly you guys got out there and got that done. Thank you very much. On Sun, in Sunday's paper, I read about a traffic stop that ended up in a fairly sizable heroin seizure, and I would like for Chief Hall to talk about that. And apparently, he's got an update on some other things also, so if you'll update us, please.
Thank you. So actually, July 11th was a very busy evening for the police department. It started off with, and they're not routine, that's not what you should call them, but a, a traffic stop on East Main Street. We had an officer that was conducting some proactive patrol, conducting speed enforcement. And on stopping this vehicle, the officer did an excellent job, ended up getting consent to search the vehicle and found 10 grams of heroin. And I think it's important to, to make that distinction in that 10 grams of heroin is distribution level quantity. We didn't have pre-notice. This wasn't something that was called in ahead of time. This was an officer being proactive. And it's important to note that heroin is sold actually by the unit, not by the gram. And that one gram of heroin actually equates to about 30 units of heroin. Multiply that by 10, you're looking at 300 doses of heroin that this one individual was carrying. And so it's, it was a, a good arrest. It was a, a great example that when our officers do have the opportunity to be proactive, this is the kind of work that they produce. And so it was excellent. Then, at about 2 AM, we had an armed robbery at the Alta Convenience Store. That's the name of the business that used to be the Western Convenience Store. An individual wearing a mask and gloves came in with what was described as a large Magnum handgun and got away with about $200 in cash after threatening the clerk. As of this evening, we do have a suspect vehicle that our detectives have identified, and we will be posting that, or we've already contacted some of the press. It is a Jeep Wrangler, and it's either a Rubicon or, or a Wrangler, it's a two-door model. The, it's nighttime, and so the color of the vehicle is unknown because of the reflection off some of the streetlights. But we will be releasing that description and a picture of that vehicle. So we're looking for our citizens to call us any tips that they may have, any slight suspicion that they may have, that they know about this vehicle. Please give us a call. And then lastly, just a quick warning, the police department has seen several daylight burglaries recently, four to five here within the last month. People are coming home to their houses, being ransacked. Yesterday, we had a little bit of a twist on one burglary where on Indian grass, we had suspects, suspects brazenly walk into a residence during the middle of the day and steal a purse off of a countertop and leave. And the only way the resident knew that her purse was stolen is that another neighbor ended up finding the purse after it had been gone through down the street. And so please lock your doors. It's really important. Montrose in that realm has changed, and we're dealing with those issues. And so it's important to make sure that everyone stays vigilant. So that's what I have.
Thank you. I, I've got several other things that I want to mention. There's a lot of things going on in Montrose between now and the next time we have a city council meeting. I, I want to go over some of it just so people understand how much really is going on in this community and how much of it is, is charity kind of work. Tonight at Horsefly, there's a tap night until 8 o'clock tonight, raising money for a scholarship in the name of Connor Imus, the young man that slipped into the canal a couple months ago. If you get a chance, you out on TV, when we're done here, turn off your TV, go down to Horsefly, support that. It's a great community effort to set up a scholarship in the name of a, a fine, fine kid, and all our kids are really great. But it's, it's an opportunity for Horsefly to give back to the community. Tomorrow night at 6:30 at The Bridges, there's a program called Operation Song. It's part of a nationwide program that pairs, there's going to be five or six Nashville songwriters in town that during the day will be meeting with veterans and hearing their story of, of what they did when they were in the service. They'll write a song, and that night, the song will be performed. So I encourage people to go. It's a free concert at The Bridges, starting at 6:30. It's a great way to honor our veterans, honor our military. Hats off to The Bridges for sponsoring it. Hats off to Warriors Resource Center for putting all the logistics together. It'll be a great night. I encourage everybody to go out for that. County Fair starts the 22nd through the 27th of, which is next week. And Monday at 7 o'clock on Main Street, there'll be the rodeo parade or the, the fair parade. July 23rd, acoustic Tuesday at Pocket Park, 5 to 8, with Pearl Road sponsored by Dart, Colorado Boy, and Cherry Creek Media. On Thursday, July 25th, is going to be a very special event at the Elks. Our post office is going to be renamed, and I'd like for Chief Hall to talk about that,
So at 1 PM at the Elks Lodge on the 25th, Montrose Police Department will be conducting a 21-gun salute in memory of Sergeant Dave Kinnerknecht. Mr. Mayor, you'll also be presenting that afternoon, and I will be saying a few, few words. So it's been 10 years since we lost Dave, and if, if we could all come out and, and support this event in honor of. this event in honor of Dave, that would be excellent. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Again, 1 o'clock at the Elks, Thursday, July 25th. What's that?
Caravanning to the post office.
And caravanning to the post office? So afterwards, after the ceremony, there will be a caravan to the post office where the U.S. Postal Service will hang a memorial plaque on the post office dedicating it to Dave and renaming it.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Saturday, July 27th, the KVNF Studio M will be officially opened. There'll be a party on Cascade between Main Street and North First. That's noon till 4 o'clock. August 2nd is the Montrose Summer Music Series with Southern Avenue and the Brown Family. And coincidentally, the Brown Family are playing right now at Horsefly as part of the fundraising for the Connor Imus Scholarship. August 3rd, the Olatha Sweet Corn Festival at the Montrose County Event Center with country singer Craig Campbell. So there's going to be a lot going on the weekend of August 2nd and 3rd. It's sort of our, I'm calling it the first epic weekend of August. We'll tell you more about the second epic weekend of August at the next council meeting and that's our Funk Fest. And the last thing, I just want to acknowledge that today, 50 years ago, some of us sitting up here were glued to our TVs, watching a rocket go up and very successfully go to the moon several days later and come back. I remember where I was. I'm sure many of us do and for those of you that don't, CNN's got a wonderful documentary about it. And with that, unless there's other comments, I may take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All right. Thank you very much. Thanks, everybody, for coming. Hope you'll join us all at Horsefly in supporting the great event down there. Thank you.
Thank you all.
I wasn't pointing fingers.